Is Wednesday, we were having that conversation, it's been a long week. It is Wednesday, August 17th at 5:00 PM. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. Council, this is our, our second work session on the fiscal year 23 budget. And we agreed last night, a couple of items that we were gonna go back to. And those items were the master fee schedule. And then we were also gonna have a quick conversation about the solid waste. I think we oughta do that quickly, so that we finish what was on the published agenda for last night. And then we'll circle back around to see if there's anything we want to talk about that we talked about last night. And then it'll be absolutely open to council, cuz you've all had a chance to sleep on it. So you may, you may have some additional questions. So, Mr. City Manager, on the master fee schedule, is it one of those y'all are saying to us, "Okay, anything you want us to change"? I assume we want to have a conversation about the food trucks. And then, Councilmember Kirkland, you had asked a question last night about the, the library, the MSRP on the library replacement. And I don't know if we heard, if we were able to get anything back from anybody on library staff. If, we, we don't have anything? Okay, so we may hear something about it. Okay, well, can we start with the food trucks?
Sure.
Or get to the page, whatever you had first?
Um, yes. So, one slide, real quick, I want to talk about before we get started.
Please, anything you want.
You asked a question last night, what would the funding do? The requested funding for the community assets versus what was proposed? How would that impact the overall percentage? So if you were to, the proposed funding that was proposed by staff, you would keep a, a reserve of 64%. And then by making the change and going to the full amount, you would still have a reserve of 58%. So, that meets our policy, it's over 50%. If that's something you want to do and fund everybody at their original request, we can certainly make that move and still meet the policy requirements. And, you know, we have community assets up. I want to mention, can be a discussion for later, I think my mic's cutting in and out. But, much like the scoring you did for the community support, I would suggest in the future, that maybe council does a subcommittee and does the, the scoring for all of the community funding. But, it's something we can certainly talk about later.
I, I appreciate Mr. Joe bringing that up. Councilmember Kirkland, you guys had talked last night about maybe keeping the subcommittee going, because you, you have some things that you would like to do on community support going forward. And, from city staff standpoint, what he's being very politically correct about saying is that the community assets also becomes a, a policy and some politics involved in, how come they got their money first and how much money are they? And so, those things kind of lumped together. And particularly, the, the, so, didn't we come up with three things? It was the community events, community support, and the community assets. If Mayor Pro Tem Rogers and Councilmember Kirkland would agree, that's not what we're gonna do to get through fiscal year 23, we're gonna do that. But for next year, it might be a good idea for you guys to maybe think about putting all, all three of those together. Are y'all opposed to doing that?
You mean, all together as in, coming up with a plan for each one of them together? Okay, so we'll make sure that all, not all being judged the same.
Yeah, they're still, right, they still have different funding. But come up with some sort of a, it's really a policy conversation, yeah.
Right, I think that, I think it would be smart moving forward, especially for councils in the future, not to, not to struggle with it, cuz we've struggled with doing this for years.
Right.
And I think coming up with a, with a plan on, on doing it might be easier for everybody.
So, it's, so, you know, you guys did a, a good job on, on the community support for First Pass. I will say that when we get done with the master fee schedule and the solid waste, the community support, that's one of the ones that I want to circle back around to. So, we can have some additional discussions. But it just, and, and Councilmember Ling, Councilmember Flunkett, that seems like a logical thing. Those, those are really political, and it's not fair to put staff in a political position and then council saying, "Well, how come you recommended that"? You know, like, let's, let's own it, let's have a subcommittee to come up with some sort of a process or criteria. And then, and then each year, the, you know, council can, I, I asked the two of you to serve on the committee. Every mayor can ask whoever they want. I think that city staff might want to add that to the staffing calendar, establish subcommittee. And then that's just kind of a reminder that, that's a process for council. Y'all can always change it, but, you know, cuz, cuz you can start that conversation and some of the planning in the April-May time period. And often, it's much better to come up with the rules before you're looking at the applications and kind of set some of your ground rules for that.
Plus, that way we can send out rules with the application. So they know what we're asking for before they apply, so they can answer any questions or...
You absolutely went where I hoped you would, cuz we're gonna want to put that into a teach-it calendar of when those things are due, so we can put it in the budget before it's presented to you, and we don't do it last minute.
So I just have a reminder and have an agenda item that says we're a stat, cuz you guys may decide you want three people, you know, maybe the mayor works on it since they're not a voting member. But, you know, there's different ways to do that. So, I just think that might be helpful for future councils. And it's a process thing, Councilmember Kirkland should be all over the process thing.
And if you like the idea of us bringing back a policy on establishing how much funding is done, I saw you mentioned last night, $5 per capita, for example. I think the $120,000 you proposed is $10.89 per capita, technically. But I mean, we could do that for you, if it's something that would establish an amount every year, then the subcommittee could go determine how it's spread out.
Well, and the subcommittee could work with you guys on what do the numbers look like they need to be.
That's pretty smart, it's a $1.89 per capita.
Well, he's assuming, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So I just want to comment, yes, on, on all of your questions. And, Ms. Gleason, I was also planning to ask your assistance as we go through the next steps on the discussions on, any ideas you may have or things that you're aware of from other cities that, that do such a thing. And just be thinking about that with us, is all.
And, council will always be counting on staff to, like, on the community support stuff that people are in good nonprofit standing, and that they've turned in their 1099s and all, all of that stuff that's not political, that's, that's helpful. But once it turns to they've re, they've reached the hurdle and we know that they're legal, now it's just, it really is politics of who gets how much. So, okay. So council, what you have before you tonight, we have two options, and that, well, that's not true. We have as many options as you guys can think of. But the two that are in front of you, and you know the, the wonderful piece of paper, the slide that he was showing, that's your first page in tonight's slide packet, if you're looking for it. If you look at your August 17th packet and flip it up, it's the very first slide. Councilmember Flunkett's like, "Yay!", let's go back to that.
Would you like to go straight to food?
Yeah. So, for, for council, for, for staff to know, they have in the 410-759, we now know how they came up with that number. Council, do you wanna, I don't, I'm not sure we want to go through every one of the asset applications tonight and make a, make a decision on that. Do you want to give everyone the funding that they requested, knowing that we're at a 58% on the reserve? And be at the 528-875? Or do you want to tell staff that we'll finalize the number with them, you know, at, like, at the next council meeting or whatever? Tracy don't care, she just needs to know what number we want to put in.
For me, I'd like to maybe look at the applications, now that I'm being asked to, to make a, you know, a call on it, I'd like to look at them.
Yeah, I, I think all of us would, is that...
So all of the applications should be in your drop box now, right? So you've got the community support, you have the community assets. All of that was made available at your request.
So don't, and, have we posted? No, we post tomorrow. Let's post a workshop for next Tuesday to discuss the community asset funding, cuz that'll give everybody a, several days to take a look at it and have a, "Okay, I think, here's, here's a number I can live with" kind of thing. Does that work for, is that agreeable to y'all?
Yes.
Is that, and then that way, the assets also know that we'll be talking about that on Tuesday. Okay.
Mayor, one suggestion?
Please.
Tracy asked a great question. Would you like to have a much broader topic to talk about, anything on the budget you'd like to? You know, pigeonhole yourself to community assets?
Flexibility's always a good thing. But let's let the community, Ms. Gleason, let's, let's make sure the community assets know that it's gonna be discussed, in case they're, they're, if they are here and we have questions for them or they want to make a plea. Okay, so now, you wanted to talk about that one? So now, let's talk about food trucks and master fee schedule. Now we're back on the packet for April 16th, and it looks like master fee schedule started on about page 28. And you're saying, just let's go ahead and jump to food truck?
All right, except, we can go through all of them if you like, or we can...
Let's, let's start at the beginning of them, so when we're done, we're done.
Works for me. So, what you see here, this was actually a request, what's not in your actual packet that was mailed, emailed to you on Friday, we actually did add one more fee. There was a request by the board to add tournament fees for the disc golf course. They're suggesting $200 for the first 100 players, and any player after that, it'd be $200 per player. Again, it's a request from the mark board, they suggested we add it in.
I'm assuming that's coming, did that go through the parks board?
It was actually their vote to suggest this, to add it to the fees.
Anybody got a problem with that? I'm assuming people who run disc golf tournaments are the ones who stood the fees and parks board agree?
Yeah, we, as the liaison for that group, yeah, we discussed this on more than one meeting. And there was a discussion about how other tournaments are run in other communities and talk to other disc golf courses and so on that went into this process. And then, quite a bit of brainstorming and then landed on, you know, a scenario.
Cool, so you're supportive of that as their liaison? Okay, excellent. I think staff's saying yes, or council's saying yes, that staff can add that one, okay?
A recreation category for the military family was added for our recreation center membership fees. They were previously lumped in with, can you not hear me? The, the mic?
Oh, okay, there we go.
Yes?
Maybe a little better. Turn Trey up a little bit, maybe, if you can.
I can certainly slide it up a bit.
Yeah, maybe just scoot it up.
How about that?
More better, okay.
Okay, so, again, there was an addition of, of the military family, that is $45. It's actually $10 cheaper than a regular family rate. This is a fee that we currently didn't have, and we're suggesting that we add it. So even, there's a military discount there, for a military individual and a military, I'm sorry, resident and non-resident fees, which is $5 difference. Also, there was a change for the city employees. For the individual, it's actually, there is no cost. And then for a family, it's $30. This was suggested by our employers of choice, our employee of choice committee. They think this would be a nice addition to add to city staff.
Council, we okay with that? Makes sense to me.
Yeah, if there's any questions or fees that we don't like, just, we're certainly happy to go back and talk about them. I think we've covered the, the fees. We can certainly talk to Bonnie if she's not here yet, she is here.
Oh, you're on vacation! Okay, come on.
Come on in.
Come on, come on. Thank you, Bonnie.
So, let me give you some context for the question that I had.
He confessed can't keep up with his library book, so he's really concerned.
One time in my life, I lost a library book. And my experience with that was that the kind of retail price for that thing was, you know, $100, but one could go and purchase it for $25, right? And so, I paid the, the fee per the policy of the $100 and learned the lesson that I needed to keep up with my library books. So anyway, I observed this and it, I, that came back to me. And, and I'm thinking, you know, obviously, we want people to take care of our library books, so we don't want to lose the assets and we want to be able to replace them if they're lost. And I just was curious if there was, if, like, based on retail price instead of MSRP? Or based on something that reflects the fact that maybe it can be replaced for 20% of the MSRP in some cases? And I just, I mentioned it, and they said that you had a well-thought-out, you know, answer to that question, and so here you are.
Here I am. Okay, so, if we say it's based on the manufacturer's suggested retail price, we can charge that much, but we don't have to charge them that much?
Okay.
When we receive a book, it goes in our catalog with the cost that we paid for the book. And so, that would be the price. Like, if you lost a book and we paid $30, that is what we paid, that is what we would ask you to pay for the book. So, the other thing is, I recognize that you said, "Oh, you could go out and buy a copy for $20", or whatever. We procedurally do not let people bring a copy in to replace what they have lost. Several reasons for that. Perhaps that book is old and we were not going to replace it. Also, buying a copy off of Amazon does not guarantee that it's the exact same copy that we had in the library. So, we do not usually let people do that. Does that answer your question?
It does. Do, do you think that you could say, based upon purchase price or replacement cost instead of MSRP? Or does that, does that different to you, or?
Um, so, it doesn't really, it's just semantics to me, yeah, it doesn't.
It could be up to...
Up to the manufacturers. We can do it that way, up to manufacturer's suggested retail price, and that would be, that would be fine with me, yes.
She's just trying to leave herself flexibility to be able to replace the asset.
Exactly.
Yes.
So are we okay if it says up to?
I am.
Staff got that? Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Thank you.
You are free to go and move about the cabin. Okay.
The filming and broadcasting fees were something that was established before we really started filming before. There's that side of service that the city provides to anyone else, we didn't, we don't have a need for fees. So all of those have been removed. We all, we don't charge...
I just wanted a clarifying question on that. So who was paying those fees? Was someone using our broadcasting service, or we were paying, is that what we were paying to BXTN?
It was to use our broadcasting service, that's not a service that we generally sell. So, we've removed all fees and it's...
So it was kind of there, but it wasn't really being...
At one point, it was, if we're gonna buy all this equipment, if somebody wants us to do it, we can't do it for free because it's been bought with tax dollars, and what they're saying is nobody's...
Well, we don't have time to film outside of our own, our own stuff, anyway.
I'm sorry, so I understand we're taking the fees out, and I understand the reasoning. So should there be a policy that we won't allow it? Cuz you don't, what if someone comes and asks you, and we don't, at one time, we did allow it. I'm just saying we want to cover our tail.
Sure.
That if you're gonna take out the fee, cuz you can't charge them, but somewhere in our books...
So maybe it notes that this is, this is a service that's no longer provided? And we do that for a year, so it's not just, it was there last year?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Always helpful. Councilmember Kirkland, did you have, and I'm, I'm just trying to be respectful if you...
No, agreed. Actually, I did have another question about the $100 for meeting room deposit.
Oh, we let her go!
I know. I was part of a community group that met in the library prior to COVID, called the Bastrop Beekeepers Association. And they had a kind of a standing day once per month where they met. And I was just, I, it makes sense, you charge, say, a $100 deposit for a meeting room if someone wanted to use it, and then you make sure it's clean and put back together. How would you handle the case where someone is getting one day a month? Would you, like, leave $100 and then you just keep it until...
Yes, sir. They, they have $100, and it's for six months.
Okay.
And most of the time, they get their money back. We don't usually have to have anything, but, so that the deposit is good for six months.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the librarian at this time? Anybody?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, next page.
The animal control and kennel permitting, commercial animal sales is not something that happens very often. After speaking with the chief, he said probably, no one's used this for years. But if they do, the goal is to cover cost of the interaction and how we have to handle that. And that's why the fee has been increased from 35 to 70, just to cover the direct cost related to coordination and things of that nature. Good?
Makes sense to me. Anybody got a problem? Okay, so far, so good.
So, building regulations, the administrative fee is, is 5%, it'll be 5%. The $500,000, again, we've added a minimum of a $1,000 fee. And I believe that is to cover the inspection fees?
It's review and inspection.
And inspection. The added fee for, for residential additions was actually just a fee that we did not have, right? So there were several, you'll see several fees as we go through here that were, oh, we were consistently charging already, but there was no, it's established actually in the fee schedule. So you'll see a lot of $85 fees here below. We've been sending out inspector, a contract third party, it cost us $85. Again, this is just cost recovery for those $85 inspections.
The $500,000 is based on the construction cost estimate?
Yes, it's based off of the standard ICC tables for different types of construction and materials.
Questions?
I was asking Councilperson Crouch, based on his experience, if he thought these were reasonable.
And we're okay?
Not at this head.
Yeah, cuz the, the fees I've seen all, all over are, some are lower, some are higher. So they're, from my experience, they're, they're reasonable, they're average on the permit.
So, just to remind the public, the, the goal here is to set the fees to where the taxpayers, the people who live in the city and paying taxes, aren't subsidizing inspection fees for, for someone else. Like, that's not what their tax dollars are for. So that, that's, that's the, that's the goal of setting those bases.
Right, and, and generally, for an inspector to come out, it's $85. But the likes of the solar system that you see there, was just not a fee that we had ever added in before. Now that's becoming more popular. We always charge $85 for an inspection, but now we have a name and $85 that says solar system permit.
Okay.
Again, these are, these are what we're already charging.
So, can you go back just for one second?
Sure.
Now that you said about the attachment permit. So, the last item changed residential attachment permit. So if you, for example, change subcontractors, is that, would that fee apply to that as a change to it?
Are, are you, subcontractor, go ahead.
No, it's not, it wouldn't, that's not the charge to change a contractor, that's, it was a change to the res attachment, residential attachment permit from $75 to $85. When we updated the fee chart last year, some of the, some of the fees didn't get updated properly. So, we were just making sure they're all consistently at $85 charge.
And then, kind of, this is just kind of a general question for all the $5 and $10 and $20 changes in fees. So, what, what's driving that little increase? Is it just because we're not covering our cost? Or is it just, what is the reasoning behind the small increments like that?
So for, on the building fees, it was consistency. Like I said, when we updated the fees, we did kind of a wholesale update last year, and some of them just got missed. So in, in three places, it would say $85, in one place it would say 75, which was inconsistent on what we were charging. So we, we just were being consistent, it's, it's $85, and that's, that's our direct cost to send an inspector out.
So it's not because we're losing money on it, it's just because you're trying to be consistent?
Yeah, trying to be consistent, and it's, and it's the actual cost.
And covering the cost.
We're covering the cost.
Okay, so we need, cuz I, we, we don't need to go in depth by...
Right. For the fee, for the lack of fees. That is direct cost for a third-party inspector is $85. And we've always charged $85, but in some places...
We just weren't always consistent with where the fee was.
Correct.
Okay, everybody cool with all of those? Any issues? All right.
The added CSI inspection is actually something that happens when you're a new home or you have not had your meter connected for six months, water's turned off for six months. That's required by the TCEQ. Again, a fee that just wasn't in there. I mean, it's $85 to have an inspector come out and perform a customer service inspection. For example, on your water meter, make sure all your hoses are connected, things of that nature. You have backwater preventers, and you go on again, it's just cost recovery. The trend, again, I think the... Change in residential trade fee is just to be consistent. I don't know if it's me or Colin's judgment.
You have bad mic karma, cuz you were fading in and out last night, too, so...
I might be asking some clarifying questions tonight.
Sure.
For terminology I don't understand. So change residential trade fee, what is that? What is change residential trade?
So residential trade fee is your plumbing inspector, or your, your plumbing, your plumber, your electrician, your mechanical, those are your trade contractors, they all have, have to have a license to the state. And they actually, they're usually working on a bigger project and they have to come in and do their little part. So, so this is for a residential house plumbing job, that someone comes in.
So I have a question with that, and it goes back to my question a minute ago. So, is this, at the beginning of the permitting process, you're required to list all of your trade subcontractors prior to really awarding a contract to them potentially? Because it's at the beginning of the building process, but you have to list all of your mechanical, electrical, and plumbing subcontractors. So during the course of the construction, or the beginning phase of construction, you may put things out to bid and then have, and then change because you get a better, lower price for a better quality subcontractor, or due to the lack of manpower or shortage, or something like that, that you can't use the original subcontractor that you were kind of forced to sign up at the beginning. So, is that what this fee would apply to that, if you changed during the course of the job?
It's not a change, the, the change refers to that we were changing...
It's the grammar. They added...
Just the rate.
Think of it as added semicolon, and they're changing semicolon, the residential trade fee from 75 to 85.
Okay, so I wasn't reading it correctly.
Thank you. Food trucks, so here we are.
All right.
So, I'm sure everybody's, I'll bet this is where we have questions, if you'd like to start. Happy to start there.
How'd you come up with making these recommendations?
So this is actual, this is our actual cost recovery, right? So, there are soft costs associated with what was in the original fees. Those were based on, we had council direction at the time to make sure that we didn't compete with the brick and mortar, right? So, a brick and mortar store pays sales tax, they pay property tax. And what that does is pay for the indirect cost. So that indirect cost, for example, if this food truck pulls downtown, catches on fire, fire department has to respond, the police have to respond. That original fee that we had would have covered that cost. This is only the direct cost of the inspections and the folks that actually do the paperwork to give them the permit. So this is a direct cost only, not something that would cover indirect costs such as street maintenance or things of that nature. That was covered in the original fees. Also, so that's how we've come to this recommendation, it's really a lot simpler. I would suggest here that once we do this, we do come back with an ordinance change, and we require you to register your sales tax here. So that's currently not a requirement. So if someone is registered in Cedar Creek, for example, but they drive in here every day and sell snow cones, I don't know, the sales tax goes to Cedar Creek. We want to make sure we capture that. If we're gonna lower the fees here, again, I would suggest that we just, that's what we do. We make sure that's part of the process and part of the paperwork. So that does help pay some of those indirect costs. Because if they're selling hundreds of tacos, we certainly want them to help pay for the fire department, too, if they catch on fire. So, or something like that. Again, that's just a suggestion, but this is, this is the fees that basically really only cover the direct cost.
After our discussion on this matter, there was a particular citizen who had expressed interest in this. And then he, he sent at least me an email, perhaps others on council, that, that showed, I believe, his receipts for fire inspections. And at that time, I, I thought I understood that there was a permit fee and then there were inspection fees, and he had to pay both of them separately. Are you saying that this is going to bring them together, or, or what? Tell me about that.
So what the fees he was referring to is on?
It's not on.
We've got a new one.
Is this one on? Okay, this one's on, hey.
Why?
There we go. So the fees he's referring to are, there are specific elements of fire protection for both brick and mortar restaurants and for the food trucks. So like, your hood over your stove, there's a fire suppression system inside of that. So like, your hood over your stove, there's a fire suppression system inside of that that has to be inspected by a third party. Our fire marshal does not do those inspections. That is a specific company, kind of like your fire extinguishers, someone has to come through every year and re-inspect them and tag them. There are companies who do that. Those are the inspections he was talking about. His fire suppression system was older, and I think his propane tank was older, and he had to get them re-inspected by a licensed person that could do those inspections.
But any food vendor operating in any city would have to have those kind of inspections intact and up to date?
Yes.
And they're good for a year?
Yes, and our brick and mortar restaurants have that same requirement. So when we come in to do certificate of occupancies or other inspections, that's one thing that they have to check, the fire extinguishers, the hoods, all those, and make sure that they're up to date on their inspections.
And so which inspections are included in this permit fee?
So the inspections that are included in this are our building official inspections and our fire marshal inspections to make sure that the wiring is up to code and the fire suppression systems and tanks, propane tanks, if they have them onboard, are properly maintained and are properly mounted, usually. And then it also covers the cost of our administrative staff for reviewing the applications when they come in, making sure they have all the required elements in the ordinance.
And you want to talk about the difference between the one year and the six months?
Sure, so we have, so we broke it down into those three categories of permits. We have a mobile food court, so these are sites that are specifically site plan to house mobile food vendors. So we have a six-month for three hundred and a four hundred per year. There's, during the course of a year especially, licenses expire, insurances expire, the people will have to contact us and update those in our system. So that's the difference in the three hundred to four hundred dollars for that timeframe. And then for, can you flip to the next slide? We have the temporary mobile foods, so these are the ones that truly drive around all the time. They may be at a different location every day or every weekend. It's four hundred for six months, and instead of doing a three-day and a three-month, we just made it consistent, six month and a year. It is also costs a little more, because one of the other requirements is we're supposed to know where you're going. And sometimes, if you've got a six-month permit, you may not know in three months that you're going to go to the ball field. So the vendors are required to contact the city and update where they're going to be, so we can update fire and police, so they know that the trucks are where they're supposed to be for the weekend.
Is the temporary, is this where someone does an event, like our, you know, July Fourth Festival in the park?
So the special event fee is not changing, that's still a hundred dollars.
So they don't have to do this and that?
Yeah, if they're just coming in for just a special event, it's just the one hundred dollar fee.
Got it.
But this is for your snow cone trucks that want to be at events all summer, so they may get the six-month permit, starting in, you know, April, so they can go for six months and set up at the ball field every weekend.
And I don't see kind of a before and after price on this one. Does that mean it didn't exist before?
No, it was, the three-day and the three-month, the three-day was three hundred and fifty dollars, and the three-month was, I think, twelve hundred dollars.
Okay.
It may be in your handout.
Yeah, it's in the.
It's not in the PowerPoint, it's in the handout that he emailed us that had the whole master fee schedule. That's what Mr. Jobe's saying.
Yep.
Are you done, Mr. Kirkland?
I'm done with the questions.
Okay. I think Mayor Proton first, and then Kevin.
First, I think that's a smart idea about the taxes, because if they, if they're filed in Cedar Creek, it's a cheaper tax than if.
And we're not collecting any of it.
Right, we're not collecting from there. And the second thing I asked, where I was going to ask about on the temporary food trucks, so they won't have the same inspections? I mean, let's say they're only coming for the event, like.
No, they still have the same inspection, so.
So they'll still get, we are still inspecting them?
We're still inspecting them. What's a little different on those is for the mobile food courts and if they're on a site, we actually go out to that site, inspect the truck and where they are. For these, we are going to inspect them every six months or a year. And then we also will probably be on-site when, you know, have the ability to inspect them as we go through the year to make sure that everything's, because as they move around more, it has the opportunity for, especially for gas and things, for fittings to come around, so.
I was just making sure on the temporary ones, that if they were coming in for the day, we still get, they still have to be inspected?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the difference between the mobile food court and the accessory to primary use. Do, so if you have a, like, the one that's going in on Chestnut, is that permit going to cover all of the vendors who may come there? Or do the trucks that come in then have to get their own individual permit to go along with the food court permit?
Yeah, they still have to get their own permit to make sure that their truck is up to code, but we already know they're going in a spot that is sited already for their truck. The, on an existing site is where you get the food trucks that go in, you know, next to the convenience store or next to the grocery store, that it's not site planned for, but there's, they have a space that we can go out and inspect and make sure they're not conflicting with anything.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted maybe for you guys to explain to me, because before, and I saw most cities charge a different fee if it's just cold products versus using cooking oil and heat, and we initially had that in there, too. And so now we're just going to a flat fee. So I was interested in understanding why we, why was there a difference? Because to me, if they're only doing cold, I could see why the cost, the fee would be less. And if they're doing hot, you know, you're risk fire risk at that point, right? So there would be more. So what was the decision or deciding factor to make it just one flat fee instead of?
It's purely based off of staff time that takes to inspect, and so it's still going to take at least one inspection by the fire marshal.
The same amount of time? So there was really no difference in the inspection process between the two?
Well, for a fire, there will be the case that for ones that have propane or other flammable liquids on the truck, that the fire department may need to inspect those more often, and we reserve the right to do that. But this fee literally charges the base fee to make sure we cover the main inspections we know we're going to do. We still may do more in the future, but.
Right, so if they do have to do it more often, is there a fee established for that more often?
We do have the fire, in the fire fees, we do have a fee for just a fire inspection for a hundred dollars, since they have to do additional inspections.
Okay, and then my last question. So they would pay our, our fee is going to cover the fire marshal for our inspection here in the city, and then they pay a separate fee at the state level? Is that what I understood?
To the county, so they have to get their health permit from the, so the county is looking at making sure they have the sanitation set up properly.
Thank you.
Because we don't have, and this is very common for cities, we don't have our own health department, so there's the county health department that makes sure it's safe. And I appreciate you explaining the propane and the hood, because really, what we're doing is making sure that they're current. We can't perform those inspections, so if you're just looking for two permits, if they don't have them, they don't have them, and they don't have to worry about it. And if they do have them, you're just looking to make sure they're current. So it's not a huge difference. And I really appreciate you asking the question, because I'm not sure council really had that kind of clarity around the difference between the two trucks before. Okay, council, any more questions about food trucks? And I believe the way, I believe the way that we made the motion was that we didn't charge until we get these adopted, and these won't be adopted till the budget's adopted, and then there's some folks who haven't been invoiced, they will then be invoiced at these fee rates. Is that what everybody's understanding, council? You straight on that? Because people are going to get bills, and they may call you, so we'll know why they're getting a bill and what the bill's for. Councilmember Kirkland, another question?
No.
Councilmember Crouch, you were on and off. Are you on, or?
No, I was just going to say.
Your mic's off.
I was just going to say that that's kind of, that's exactly what Paul had said in that meeting we had back then, so. And some people have asked about it, so I'm glad you brought it up again, so they can hear it again.
It's what we're, trying to keep us all on the same page. Councilmember Kirkland, you thought of something?
No, I'm just, I've got the, when we had that meeting here in council chambers, we got a handout, which was the food truck vendor fees in 12 cities that I had looked up, and a six hundred dollar a year fee on the temporary mobile food vendor permit puts us, no longer as the most expensive, but now the second most expensive city, but it's not as, almost punitive as it was before. It's, it feels more rational. Is that, that's the cost, though? I mean, because I absolutely want to cover the cost, so.
Yes, that's the cost.
Okay.
Okay, council, we okay with these? All right.
If you'd like to go through the rest, or if you have questions on the additional fees, are there any on the screen that we'd like to discuss in more detail?
Ten cents for a municipal jury fee.
Those rates are purely from state, so we're just updating our ordinance to match state.
We can count on the state to help us have revenue here at the municipal level.
We get them straight from the state.
That is.
On the offenses nuances, I think that was just an increase, it hadn't been increased, trying to cover costs. Utilities, solid waste, we've really talked about this. They submitted their paperwork timely, they're taking the full five percent that's allowed by our current contract, so that's already plugged in.
Okay, I apologize for this, but I don't know what a garagekeeper is.
So whenever, and I talked to the chief about this earlier, whenever a wrecker has to come and pick up a vehicle, or some coordination has happened with the police department, they pick it up, tow it off to their spa, where they hold it and put it in impound.
Impound lot, I would have understood. Garagekeeper, I didn't follow.
That fee, it covers our cost for that coordination and things of that nature.
Perfect.
And it's really not out of market.
Okay, council, you okay with that? Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
Again, a lot of these fees, and Jennifer will certainly be the expert on these, but the warrant determination is sixty dollars now, there was never a fee established for that. We often get asked about development fees in lieu of, somebody doesn't want to put in sidewalks, somebody doesn't want to plant additional trees. These are fees that we've already suggested and folks have already put into escrow or have paid us in the past. We just did not have a place for that. We've added the fourteen dollars a square foot with the city engineer, current concrete prices, things of that nature, are anywhere from seven to fourteen. They continue to move. We think this will cover our costs, including any administrative and coordination fees that need to happen. And there's also a time lag. When that doesn't go in, eventually the city has to put it in later, so the cost could see some inflation. And then our site development.
Well, hang on real quick. So council, for clarity, if you're, if you have a development and you've already said that you'll build the sidewalks, that maybe, like, I want to finish and I don't want to mess with the sidewalks, so I'm going to write a check, that check then doesn't go to, we can go spend it on anything. You can only spend it on sidewalks back on that site. It's just literally, when you read fee in lieu, it's, I don't want to do that thing, but I'll pay you. Like, you know, what you do when your daughter's in Girl Scouts and you say, how much are you supposed to make for selling those boxes of cookies? Just let me write the check. It's that kind of thing, where the same thing is accomplished, but they're just paying the dollars. And then there's a point that maybe we would do it when next door developed and you don't have a sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere on both ends, but will eventually go somewhere, and you do it all at the same time.
Correct.
Council, does that make sense? Mayor Proton Rogers?
Well, that makes sense on the sidewalk, but so on the tree part, we would go in and plant trees when they're paying in lieu of?
You want to talk about the tree mitigation fee?
Yeah, so we would have mitigation for, generally, it's trees that are twenty-four inches greater than they are.
I do this all the time. It's for trees. We have tree mitigation requirement that if you cut down a tree over a certain size, you have to replant the same amount of inches. So if you cut down a twenty-four inch tree, you got to plant twenty-four inches of the tree, so four-inch trees, that's six more trees. Sometimes your lot either can't handle that many trees, or, because you're going to pave eighty percent of it, so this gives us the ability, they can pay us, and then we can go down the street and plant, you know, trees in the parks next door.
Like she was saying, it would still stay into.
So it's saying, so.
It can only be used for trees.
It can only be used for trees.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, I understood the sidewalk, but I was just to make sure we had a tree fund or something.
And our tree preservation and mitigation ordinance, I think, is really more about tree replacement. So if you lose a larger tree, a lot of folks will say, hey, this is a gigantic tree, we don't want to cut it down. But a lot of times, when you see really large trees, they're also at the end of their life. So this gives them the option to remove it and then put back six trees that'll even benefit the area, but, you know, a better, more of a benefit versus one tree that's over half of its life. So that's kind of the thought.
And this is not they're forced to, this is an option if you would like to.
Yeah.
That's not on the city side, that's on the developer side to opt into this option.
Correct. We would prefer you to plant the trees, but if you don't want to, or you can't fill them, then we'll pull them somewhere else for you.
Would this apply, like, for instance, Burleson East, there was a discussion about four-inch trees not being commercially available because of supply chain issues, and so there was a discussion about planting a different-sized tree, but at the same spacing. Would this come in in that conversation, or would that just be a?
The mitigation part, mitigating means something has to have been removed, and you're trying to mitigate that removal.
Our code requires, in most cases, a four-inch tree. There are some situations where they can plant a two-inch tree, and that's just the nursery size of the tree, and this is the mitigation cost at a four-inch tree, which is what our code requires. So if we got six hundred dollars and we need to go plant a three-inch tree, we could, we'll buy, we'll have to buy more trees, but yeah.
And a lot of times, the reason a four-inch tree is selected, is they're generally a certain height, right? So if they're planted along the sidewalk or something like that, the lower branches are actually tall enough not to impact visually impaired. So you can use a smaller caliper, but they have to have a certain height standard. So the goal is to make sure.
Because you're trying to get to the canopy and shade.
The canopy and the shade. So if it's smaller around, that's okay, as long as it's a certain height.
So I, Mayor, you said something about mitigation, and there was also a discussion about cutting trees down and replacing them, and so actually, I find myself in a circle slightly confused with what this item is now.
So if you have a lot, and Burleson East is a great example, you'll notice not a whole lot of trees on that site. So they're not going to have a tree mitigation, because they're not taking down any major trees?
No, they will have some tree planting requirements for new trees, but not mitigation.
And so what Councilmember Kirkland's saying, and that's what I was going to say, so mitigation is, there's this big tree, but it's in the middle of my living room, I need to take the tree down. Okay, well, then you got to put that many inches of tree back. The spacing along sidewalks or what, that's a tree requirement. Is there a fee in lieu of if they don't want to plant those trees? I think the answer's no.
Yeah, typically no, because they're required, that's a requirement of the development.
So it's new trees to a site. That's why I was saying, the mitigation is a key word here.
And when you brought up mitigation, then that's where I found myself lost, because I thought, wait a second, what is that? And so now I understand, thank you.
It's cool. So I can't look at trade, because I might get a really dirty look, so I'm not really sure where to look. I, I'm not saying that we need to add this right now, but while we are talking about development fees in lieu of, I believe we should develop drainage, detention drainage fees in lieu of. We've already kind of, we know we get those requests on a regular basis, and I'm not saying that's something you have to do by October first, and I'm really looking for staff recommendation of, it's this much if you're in Gill's Branch, it's this much if you're, I understand there's going to be some criteria, and you got to do some engineering on it, but I think that's something we've been asked, so we ought to kind of plan for a fee in lieu of.
I think that's something that we might have contemplated in the drainage study. I'll ask Gabriella if that's.
I think it's in the master drainage plan, but we.
Okay, but to me, that.
Sir.
Because what I had heard us say is, yeah, it's been discussed, but it's not in our current code. So if it needs to come back in an ordinance so that it can go in the master, however y'all do it, do it all the right way. I just know that that's something that's been discussed, and that we ought to take care of it.
Absolutely, that's fair.
And since we're on Bastrop Building Block Code, the other thing, which has nothing to do with master fee, but could eventually have something to do with master fee, because it certainly has to do with the budget. When council got our presentation on May 12th, some of you may remember, there was When counsel got our presentation on May 12th, some of you may remember there was a line item of, that didn't have any dollars associated with it, but for, that staff may had some revisions to the Bastrop Building Block Code that they would, that they would suggest. And I'm, I'm thinking that, I'm suggesting for counsel and looking for counsel agreement that we really need to tell city manager Jobe and the next city manager, please, let's not try to do a huge change all at the same time. The, our planning director, I think there's some low hanging fruit, vet it through P and Z and bring it to council. And if, and there's some items that can be a win for the developer, doesn't want to do it, the, she may be in agreement that we don't need it right at that moment. If there's some adjustments that can be made that would fix that. I understand that's not a huge amount of money, but I also understand you only have so many things to do. So I'm hoping that counsel will direct the city manager that we'd like that to be a higher rather than a lower priority from a time management standpoint. Everybody okay with that? And, and I think getting the idea from the experience that we've had, vetting it through planning and zoning, then it can come to council. It's, it's gone through a, a good process, and vetting it through planning and zoning will allow the first opportunity for developers to say, yeah, I'm okay with that, or no, I'm not okay. You know, we can, that's the whole point of vetting it. So since we're talking about fees and talking about the code, I wanted to mention that. All right, so you want to talk about the, is that a new one, site development working without a plan?
Yes, so these, so as we experienced with people doing, kind of getting ahead of some of their projects recently, we didn't have any violation fees in the subdivision and zoning codes. So we've added this site development plan. If you get started, if you start the work prior to your site development plan being approved, it's a $500 minimum violation fee that we can charge. Same with a zoning violation on the next page. And then, and also for starting work without a certificate of appropriateness approved by the Historic Landmark Commission, $500. And that's, I believe, the minimum fee by state law for a misdemeanor offense, so.
Counsel, any comments?
I have a question about this slide. So on the banner, where it says, oh, I'm, I read that wrong earlier today, now I'm reading and I was like, okay, nice. I, I thought that the two-week was staying on there, but now I'm seeing the removed. I guess my eyes just didn't see that earlier today. The sidewalk sign, is that the little V sign? The little V sign? I kind of think that's high. Can we talk pricing?
So that's $60, and that's for as long as you have your sidewalk sign. So if you have.
For a year?
For, for as long as you have it.
Forever.
So if you, if you get your A-Fram sign and then you are open for the next 10 years, you've paid for it once.
I thought it was like a year. I'm like, can we go down?
No, so the only one that's a yearly fee is the banner sign.
Okay. Let me see if I have.
The other one is just a per, per permit, per new sign.
Okay, that was all I had, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Never mind, I'll have to do some research, because I thought the sidewalk sign was per year in the policy, in the sign policy. I'm just making sure. I love the idea of it being forever, because it doesn't need to do that. And, and the, but the banner is not removed in two-week period, that's for a year, correct?
Yes, that's for a year.
So what, what is the, what is the meaning of remove two-week period?
In the fee chart, it says $60, it's, it's.
$60 for every two-week period. You're removing that, but we've already fixed it in the, in the ordinance, okay.
It's making it consistent with our previous changes.
That's like the change trade. It's just there, it's weird to, they're trying to make the font big and fit it on a slide and convey a lot of information.
Yeah, and match what the existing ordinance is. So we updated the ordinance, but not the fee schedule.
Right, I just want to make sure.
So we're still tonight.
Because I knew we had to update the ordinance, that's.
John had his light on first.
Councilmember Kirk, are, are you done, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers? Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, on, on three of these fees, it's got the site development, the zoning violation, and the working without certificate of appropriateness. The, it says viol, cost $500 per violation per day. What are the boundary conditions on the per day? So for instance, let's say that someone did some development completely without a permit, completed it, and you discovered it 10 years after it was finished. Would you charge them for 3,650 days at $500 a day?
I love that idea. That could take care of some funding issues.
So my understanding, and I regret if I'm wrong, this is actually just establishing a fee that once we file something at court, then the court would have a fee to base that number off of, right? The judge can raise it or lower it.
No, we can administratively charge this fee. So it's administrat, it's, we can charge this fee administratively, and we could, and we can still cite you in court. This is the administrative fee. The $500 per day is every citation, so we would have to send you a new citation for every, so if we sent you one every day, we could charge you the $500 per day. But it's per letter we send you to cite you.
But if they, if they get a, get the violation and they stop, then you're not going to send them one the next day.
Yes, and we're working with our, our legal staff to create a, a policy that has very clear procedures for how we, how we provide citations and the timelines on those.
Okay.
Councilmember Kirkland, that's okay? Councilmember Lee?
One last question on the banner. So I remember a conversation about them, if they changed the banner, that would be another fee.
No, only if they, if they, if they change the banner to a whole new spot on the site, and it's a different, totally different sized banner. But if they have, they're going to put the banner in their, you know, front window, and they're going to change it out every other day, they can do that as long as it stays in the same spot.
Okay.
And the same size?
And the same size, same size and same spot.
Same size, same spot.
For one year.
Or smaller.
Yeah, we said same size or smaller.
Yeah.
So as long as it's where they were originally permitted to have it, then they could change it out all year.
Okay, we cool with this one?
And I was going to ask you if you checked with legal, but you said, yes, so Alan said we can't charge all those things, so thank you for checking.
All right, all lights are off. We can go to the next page.
So we are adding some new cemetery fees. So we are actually recommend we take over cer, a particular service that is now done by the funeral homes that we will actually do and be able to charge these fees. We did an RFP for the burial opening and closing and chose a contractor and got their fees. And then we kind of did a benchmarking of the charges that other cities were charging for this. So it's really just a, an additional way for us to be able to put some more revenue into the cemetery fund to help fund some of these future developments that the board would like to see, like Section 9. So these are just the fees that are associated with that. We administratively already work with the contractors because they, even though they're being paid for by the funeral home, they're coming over here, they're getting a permit, we already have a relationship with them. So it's not really that much more work on us to take over this piece of it.
So does that mean that I pay a fee to the funeral home and I think I'm done and I'm not, and now I have to come here? Or the funeral home collects it and pays it to you?
They will still collect the fee and turn it over to us.
Thank you. I just, when you're dealing with that, you don't want to have to go make another stop. That's why I was asking. Okay.
Because usually they'll collect the perm, sometimes they'll collect the permit fee as well, and then just turn around and pay us the permit fee.
Okay. Counsel, you okay with that?
Question?
Absolutely.
Yeah. For instance, adult burial, I mean, that, that's pretty clear. Liner setup fee, or to bury one adult individual, are we?
So a liner is a concrete liner that's required if they want to double stack within their plot.
Okay.
The setup fee is the, what they put out, the chairs, the covering, the, they do, the contractors actually do all of that.
Okay.
All right, all lights are off. So if we're following along in our packet, that gets us to page 39, and the top thing on there is the solid waste RFP. So for the budget discussion, really what we're saying is there was nothing in the budget that was presented that included the RFP. Things to remember are the 5% increase was allowed by the current contract, that's, that's taking place. Our current contract gets us through 23, September of 23, I think. Is that right? You'll keep me from lying. And so we've got some time, and we can have additional discussions about the RFP and how to go about the RFP and all of that. The main thing we're trying to establish tonight is to make sure we don't find ourselves in a position that we want to do the RFP and we don't have funds for the RFP. Did, did you, you think 25 is enough? You got a quote for, I wrote down 20 last night, but in my mind, I thought you said 22, 25. So I, what are you feeling comfortable with to put in as a budget amount?
I think 20 is probably fine.
Okay. I think that there needs to be, we're, like, well, I won't repeat all those things. I think we're going to have additional conversations, but the intent tonight is to just make sure that we've got it budgeted. That doesn't mean that we're going to spend all of it or that there's not another way to do it, but that we just have it there in case we need it. Is that, Councilmember Crouch, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that takes. Yeah, it's a whole, whole nother conversation, and, and we'll have, we'll have that one. All right, so those were the two, those, the solid waste RFP funding in the budget, and the master fee schedule means that we finished what was on our agenda for last night. I told you there were a couple of things we wanted to circle back around to, and I may use that as a questions for tonight. I got one I'll do later. And we have a person signed up to speak on the patriotic festival funding, and I get, we'll have the citizens speak in it, because I have some comments that I want to make on that, so we'll discuss that. So Becky Womble, if you'll come forward and state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Becky Womble, Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, 927 Main Street. Good evening, counsel and mayor. Last night, I heard about a lot of discussion about the patriotic festival, and so I appreciate the opportunity to come to you and give you the facts about this 31-year-old event. First of all, I want to dispel the myth that this is a fundraiser. This is, I feel like, a gift that between the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and the City of Bastrop that we give to the citizens of our community. It is not only just a citizen of our community, but probably central Texas based on the retail coach data that we recently found. Also, our request is for $33,600, not $35,000 that was quoted frequently last night. And so in your packet, I want you to know that the chamber's an open book. Any information you want, we're happy to supply. And that, including your packet, is the funding we have received and the actual cost of the fireworks going back to 2005. As you can see, in more recent years, we've consistently received more than twice the cost of the fireworks. In fact, in 2018, between the funding we got from BP&L and the hot funding, we received $63,400, and the cost of the fireworks were $10,000. Lastly, I want to provide a financial recap of the 2022 patriotic festival that I provided to the board of directors this morning at 8:00 in our board reading, our board meeting. The total event expenses were nearly $71,000 in hard cost. To cover these expenses, the expenses of this event in a magnitude of this size, our membership gave a sponsorship in total of $54,710. That does not include in-kind gifts such as signage. We also provided 178 volunteers, giving over 400 hours of time to execute this event. I feel like a very conservative estimate of the chamber staff time of this so-called fundraiser generated $3,920.30 for the chamber. As far as the duration of the 22 fireworks, you will find an email from the vendor that we've had for 21 years, or 31 years, and the fireworks were 14 and a half minutes long. And due to the launch site, we are limited in the shell size because of the structures that surround the launch site. Anyways, I appreciate the sponsorship between the City of Bastrop and the Chamber of Commerce, and look forward to executing another Bastrop Patriotic Festival.
Thanks, counsel. Any questions for Ms. Womble? So on the, you specifically talked about 2018, for, to qualify for $40,700 of hot funds, it, it's specifically says it was a two-day event. That's because you had to have heads and beds to qualify for that, correct?
What they want to do is they wanted, yes, to try to execute and have heads and beds. Also, it was right after we had launched Visit Bastrop, and they were trying to elevate the caliber some events, and so we did try a two-day event. It was determined between city staff and the leadership at that time that it was too much on the resources of the city staff, and so then we moved back to a one-day event.
Which is why you quit getting hot funds.
Yes, and we, and at the time, we didn't have the data from retail coach, and so we didn't feel like that necessarily it qualified for hot funds, and we wanted to make sure that there was clean lines on what was spent on hot funds and what wasn't, especially with the launch of Visit Bastrop. And so that's when we started getting the funding from BP&L.
Okay, and just so you know, it, it's, it's for us to keep track of, but it's not funded by BP&L, and it hasn't been since 2018 when that change was made. It is transferred, it's a part of general fund, so it's a little bit of semantics, but it, it's not listing it as BP&L from 2018 to 2023, that's not what those funds are. And, and that's what I'm saying, that, that's on our side.
Okay.
It used to be, for, for a long time, we used to say, you know, it was a transfer from BP&L, but the transfer from BP&L goes to general fund, so it's general fund dollars.
Okay.
Which was driving the conversation that these dollars could also be used to repair potholes in our city streets. So that, that's, that's where that came from. And the, regarding the hot funds, what the discussion was on the event is that this is a, this is a community, an event that should be handled like any other event, just like the, the car show, the Veteran, the Veterans Day Car Show, where it's a big community event and everybody's coming together, and, and they go to hot funds and go, and that's why we have Visit Bastrop to make sure that everybody stays legal in their hot funds. Thankfully for counsel, we're no longer involved in those making the political decisions of who qualifies for what kind of hot funds, because they take care of the handling that part for us. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Can I ask a question, even though it's certainly citizens' call that we usually can't ask a question?
Well, because she signed up for 2A and it's on.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that's, you're not breaking any rules, you're allowed.
On your, on your payroll dollars, is that like, how many, how did you come up with that $9,000? I mean, is that like the whole staff or 40 hours the entire week?
Yes.
So for those four weeks, does staff do nothing for the chamber?
I would say yes, pretty close to it, yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure that's what you're saying.
I mean, we still, obviously in June, execute a luncheon.
I mean, you still run chamber business, correct?
Yeah, but not very much. It's a lot of time, and even after the event, I mean, a lot of people have the perception that.
I, I ran events, I understand. I just was making sure that's what you're doing here.
Yes, ma'am.
And how many staff is that?
Five staff.
Five staff for four weeks? That's why I just tried to make sure everybody realizes that it's five staff, four weeks.
Yep, yep. And then that doesn't, you know, count all the, you know, overtime on a Saturday that, where they've already put in a 40-hour week, so.
They're realizing how many staff people it took for that many weeks.
And from a, as far as it being a fundraiser or not, when all the numbers come out, if there's any money left over, it goes to the chamber?
Yeah, the $3,900.
Right, but I, and I've heard it, I've heard.
And I can write a check for half of it if you want to split half of it, so.
No, what, the point is, it's a business decision. So that, and it's a business decision for, for, for our taxpayers as well. So, you know, the Bastrop area cruisers have people that are volunteers that spend months of, and hours and upon hours, and they make the business decision of whether or not they're going to do that event. So that's the only thing I'm trying to clarify.
And it's been a discussion, it's something that Paul and I have discussed in our monthly meetings for months, that is giving the heads up about, you know, is this fit our mission statement? Because it is so time intensive to produce, and so it's discussion. In fact, the last meeting I had with Paul, the Tuesday before he left, it was like, what are y'all doing for next year? And I said, well, I don't know yet, you know, so I'm taking it to my board. And, you know, talking about working outside those four hours, I mean, even currently, we're doing things like, you know, flipping the website, uploading pictures afterwards. So there's stuff that goes on all year long to execute this event that doesn't happen[1771.52] So there's stuff that goes on all year long to execute this event that doesn't happen just right before the event.
Right. Well, and you, I, I assume you, um, watched, uh, watched today, watched the discussion?
This afternoon, yeah.
So hoping that you heard the full discussion.
I took a night off and spent it with my mom last night, so...
Well, we wish we could take a night off, but, uh, we don't get to. Uh, the, the other part of it is, it's a considerable amount of work on city staff.
Yes.
And, um, I, it was nice of you to recognize the parks folks and give them the, their lunch on that luncheon, but that is a hot, long, hard day, holiday weekend that they are not with their family. And, um, there is a, there's a tremendous amount of work, and they're generally doing the work that you can't get a volunteer to do. So it may be time to just rethink it all the way around. Um, I, I know there's been some feedback that, um, there's families with little kids crying because they can't afford $20 for a wristband for each of their kids. That's part of why we keep the splash pad open.
Right, and that's one thing that, um, our, it's not about, it's crazy. Uh, the first year, we didn't charge armband, uh, a fee for an armband, and it's like we were a babysitting service, and people just dropped off their kids. So the next year, we did charge a fee for the armband, and it was amazing. Parents stayed with their little kids. But our board doesn't, like, if they recognize that, or somebody, you know, has that look in their face, like, "Oh, my gosh, you know, I can't afford that", we do give away a lot of armbands. I mean, there was 500 in the box, and I think we sold 383. So we gave away a lot of them.
I kind of wish you hadn't told me that, because that's even a bigger problem, of, we're not consistently treating everyone the same and having the same expectations.
Well, like, for things like, if there was a kid that was under three years old, you know, something like that.
Okay, well, that's different than if somebody looks like they can't afford it, that's a problem.
Whenever, you know, there's smaller children, and they might have a number of children, and one of them's smaller, yes, we would...
I would hope that we'd have a consistent written policy that says, you know, like, the family rate is X, or nobody's charged if they're under a certain number of years of whatever. But, again, that is a business decision for the chamber board to decide whether or not they want to do it. Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Womble? Can't tell if anybody's, Councilmember Crouch?
No, I was just going to say, thank you very much for breaking this out like that, because this, that's one of the discussions we had last night, was how's it all broken out? And then, for, for our part too, in the future, we should know.
Absolutely, because the clarity of last night was, until we received the memo from August 12th, and we're, I'm not saying that you've done anything wrong, I'm saying what council was told, what council understood, what council was voting on. The impression has always been, and I've double-checked with people that have been on council before, I've double-checked with staff, council was under the impression we were funding fireworks, period.
That hasn't come from us, so I don't know where that perception came from, but...
And again, I mean, I'm not, and so I'm saying on the record, as I said last night, not accusing you of doing anything wrong, just wanting to, it begs the question, fundraiser or not, why are we paying for this particular nonprofit, and we're not providing the exact same services for every other nonprofit?
And, and some of it, you know, um, you know, for about, I'd have to go back and look at the year, you know, for about 25 or plus years, it was fireworks and the Austin Symphonic Band. And then, the previous council and previous leadership and city staff wanted to see more of a festival, something that was more than just the fireworks, and so that's why we took it, and we kind of ran and grew the event. In fact, I think Trey can remember doing elevation changes and stuff, when we talked about bringing slide in the city to accommodate, because we knew that first year, there was not enough room, um, on the splash pad for all the kids that came. And so we knew we needed some kind of other activity for children, that's why we came up with the Water Wonderland, but we, we looked at a lot of other ideas.
Yeah, I do remember.
You remember that? Okay, it was kind of a big venture, but...
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Rogers, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I just wanted to clarify, you said your board and the council came up and said to expand it? Which year was that?
The city and some of the previous staff and some of the previous leadership of the city wanted to expand an event, because we were trying to have, the first year that Dale was here with Visit Bastrop, and we were trying to, uh, we were developing our marketing, our strategic plan, and we kind of focused on events the first year of Visit Bastrop. And so one of the things we did was try to grow that event when we were trying to get Visit Bastrop off the ground, because they focused on events in their first, uh, marketing plan.
Okay, I want to make sure that, where that came from.
Thank you. Uh, so, not all hot funds were used for patriotic festivals.
Yes, I didn't have time to go break out to find out what part was the patriotic festival, but if you remember, in order to get Visit Bastrop started, we gave back the money that we used to receive as a visitor center to help get Visit Bastrop started.
But you're saying that BPNL, because a, a long time ago, it was BPNL, there was no fireworks funded from before 2017?
From the records I'm finding in QuickBooks, it was all out of hot funds prior to tho, those dates.
And before 2011, there were no fireworks?
There, there were fireworks, I just, because of our QuickBooks and the size of the file, those files, um, are collapsed, and so I can't go back and look at the detail prior to 2010.
Okay, because it's my understanding that, um, and Public Works Director Hancock may be able to help me, I think that the city had been paying for fireworks for a very, very long time, and there's always been fireworks at Bastrop, and it was always paid for by the city, some, some city fund. So you're just saying you don't have access to all those records?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No, I don't. But I mean, I had the access of like, the dates and like, the prices of the fireworks, so I was just trying to give you just for reference state, you know?
And again, council was under the impression it was for fireworks, so...
Okay, Mayor Protem Rogers?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the information.
I'm sorry.
I'll go back and look at my records.
Okay.
Thank you. So council, um, what I was going to recommend, I didn't know we were going to get a, a document, and I'm glad we were able to talk through it, and I appreciate having the data, but, um, after kind of thinking about what all we went through last night, and for consistency, I'd like to, uh, because I know that when the fireworks are contracted, they work with Chief Rosales more than they work with anybody else. That's who's, does, helps them with, and, and even Chief Rosales said, ultimately, it's the person with the fireworks license that makes the go-no-go. Now, I'm, I'm sure they're in correlation with each other, but there's only one person who's holding that license. So, um, to eliminate any possible confusion in the future, and when this was first discussed as becoming a community event, it was from the basis of, no matter what else happens, the community expects there to be fireworks on that weekend. That's a, that's a reliable thing that they're counting on. I'd like, and I spoke with City Manager Job earlier today to see if there was a downside to it, but I don't know why we don't just contract directly for the fireworks. And then we can say to the taxpayers, "We paid for the fireworks", and we, council can decide year to year if it's, um, I guess according to this, $15,000 for 14 and a half minutes, then, um, maybe we're able to negotiate something different. It's not any different than what we were doing with the lighting on the Riverwalk, and there was, like, we got tired of the white lights over and over, so then we're doing color lights, we're doing different change. We can have, um, we can have some of those negotiations and establish the contract, because I know we've, uh, reviewed, been, we have been in conversations with them before, and that would have some clarity around it, and then, um, from, the Chamber of Commerce can make a decision as to whether it makes sense for them to continue to do the event, if they can raise the sponsorships for it or not. And, um, and then we're treating all of our nonprofits the same, and several of the nonprofits do things on holiday weekends. And one of the things I was thinking about is, it might open an opportunity, if we were having longer fireworks, um, I came up with, maybe some of our businesses on Main Street who have said, "Well, everybody's down in the park, and they're not in my business, and I'm not seeing, um, a, a huge economic", and I know that now we have some, um, cell phone data, and we can, we've got some data that we can have the conversation around, but maybe there's like, firework baskets that you can pick up, and you can take home and watch the fireworks, or you can take to Fisherman's Park. I think there's, um, there might be some other options, and if the chamber chooses to continue to do it, maybe it's time to evaluate which of the things that take so long and the additional work, if it's really worth, if it makes business financial sense to do it. So I, I think it would be cleaner if we're paying for the fireworks, if we thought we were paying for the fireworks, let's pay for the fireworks. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Well, I think doing it that way would also take some liability off of the, the chamber. Before their, I'm sure they have to have insurance for that fireworks, or this or that, it would take it off their plate, they wouldn't have to do it. But it also would give them the opportunity to go to Visit Bastrop and ask for the hot funds to pay, to help pay for their event. You know, just like, she could probably get more money asking from Visit Bastrop.
It just puts everybody on a level playing field.
Right, and it takes it out of the general fund money into the hot fund money, which that's what it's for.
Councilmembers, other councilmembers' comments?
I mean, I agree with everything you said, so, I concur, not much more for me to add there. Um, other than what I added last night, I think there's, as you stated, opportunities for organizations to work together, um, break down some silos, work together to help with the event, to make the event better. I too, um, I didn't even know anything was going on, um, now that you mentioned that, on the streets, because I was down at the park, and someone mentioned something about getting something up at the top, and I was like, "Oh, let me walk through there", because I was getting ready to leave. So somewhere, some kind of way, um, pulling that group into the planning, pulling other organizations in to help with sponsorship and fundraising, I think it could still be a great event. But I do agree that I think that it would be better if the funding separate, and I know that people want to see more fireworks.
I, I, thank you for bringing that up, because I forgot about that. Four weeks of shutting down a business seems like a hu, a huge, huge burden. We have a number of nonprofits, some of which we support, and some that we don't give funding to, but are, are nonprofits in the community. Somebody could, um, if, if there were more organizations involved in it, it wouldn't involve somebody shutting down their business for four weeks to, to put it together. And I know there's still going to have to be some coordination of things, but, um, someone made a comment that, uh, like, on the, on the fun run, I, I wondered, you know, what if there was a stand-up paddleboard on, on Saturday morning as, as an event that got people down? Like, people can pretty much do, it might give an opportunity to give a break to some folks that are clearly, as this is documented, you know, three months of their lives, and maybe there's a way to spread the work, many hands makes light work. Councilmember Kirkland?
I, um, I, I didn't have a prior belief on how the money was spent or not spent.
In the last two months, you didn't know for a fact?
Exactly, it just wasn't something that, that I had focused on at any point in time. So, uh, I guess my perspective on it is that I really enjoyed the event that was put on by the chamber, and I see a lot of value to it in the community, and, um, my preference would be to fund it as requested, and, and not try to, not try to change it. That, that, that would be my preference.
I just want to make sure you understand what I'm saying. If we take out the cost of the, the fireworks from their 35, 36, whatever it was, you know, well, let's just take out the 15 out of there, because, right, 15?
It's worth the budget.
So that's only giving her $15,000 to spend, which she can go over to the, if, what we're trying to do is open the door for her to get more hot funds through the, the channel. We give Visit Bastrop a big hunk that they can give out. That's not their money, they're, they're in charge of giving out our piece of the hot funds to these organizations. So they're not giving away their money, they're giving away our portion of the hot funds. Do you understand what I'm saying? So what I'm saying is, I think Becky can get more money from the hot funds to make that budget bigger than the 33s, what I'm saying.
I'm concerned about the things that we don't know yet, the unintended consequences. And I, I, I believe that if we fund this as requested, we will have an extremely high percentage chance of having an event next year that's awesome. If we go down the path of making significant changes to how we structure it, or how it's run, or which volunteer groups get involved, that, that, the level of coordination required there is so significant. I would feel like the, a potential unintended consequence could be that we end up either without an event, or an event that, where the city does fireworks, and, and then that's it. And which, maybe that's not terrible, but I mean, that's, that it could end up getting stripped down, and the festival part could go away, and I would hate to see that.
Can I ask Becky one more question?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Did you say the board had approved doing it this year, or they're still thinking about it?
That's where I was going, I don't think there's a guarantee.
I mean, if it's not funded, I mean, it's like...
I thought there was a discussion prior to any discussion about funding, that y'all, because of the amount of time, there wasn't a guarantee they're going to do it next year.
No, 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 I, that's not true. We, we do not want to drop the event. I mean, we would like to maybe give it to someone else, but doing it next year is not feasible. It's really not for someone else, I don't care what organization is. It's, it's a lot of work, and in order to keep the caliber, we would want to partner with somebody and handhold and, and gently, you know, pass off the event.
So your board's committed to doing the patriotic festival for 2023?
Yes, I don't want to just drop it if, you know, I, I, I don't want the event to go away. It's a 31-year tradition, I think people look forward to it.
But the 31 years hasn't been the water slides, the, the tradition for 31 years is fireworks at dusk.
Yeah, since 2018, so, yeah.
Right, been fireworks in a band.
But I, I do want to address the hot funds thing. Um, hot funds have very specific way, I, I sit on the Visit Bastrop board, and there's very specific ways that, that hot funding can be spent. And I personally think Visit Bastrop does a tremendous job of marketing. I, I'm not a professional in that area, that's why the chamber pushed so hard to get Visit Bastrop established, is because we wanted professionals who knew what they were doing. And so, I mean, you can ask them their, um, hits on their website, and the things that they did from the articles and everything, they knocked it out of the park when it came to...
They report to us, we see all those numbers.
But hot funds is good for your bands, there's lots of things that hot funds can be spent on.
That's true, that's true, but I mean, there's very, um, specific ways about what you can spend it on.
Okay, but the unintended consequences, to get back to Councilmember Kirkland, particularly now that this has become, and it should be, completely transparent, because this is a budget that has never been shared with council before, as far as, just, we're deliberating. Because this is, uh, the first time we're seeing these numbers, now, every other nonprofit is going to say, "Why are you not funding my porta-potties, my construction fence, my golf carts?" That's an unintended consequence that I'm concerned about, because we are not doing that for any other nonprofit, yet we have other community events that have a long tradition that are being done by nonprofits. So I, and, um, Ms. Womble's ha, is stating that it's not a fundraiser. I know there are many people that believe that was why, for, um, one of the years, the only, they were the only ones that were selling water, they were the only ones that can sell beer, and it was because it was a fundraiser, which was, it's, there's nothing against a nonprofit having a fundraiser, that's awesome. That's how you stay in business, so it's not a criticism, but that's part of why people believe that it's a fundraiser, because when the funds are left over, they go to the chamber, people are donating for them to sell, knowing that that's for the chamber. So an unintended consequence of this is, now we're, now we have an unlevel playing field for community events on holidays that are put on by nonprofits.
I, I see that, I, I, I mean, I think it would be reasonable to ask all of the nonprofits to provide budgets for how that money is spent.
We don't give them any money, they're not asking for any money.
Oh, I apologize, I thought we had several events that we funded in the discussion yesterday.
The MLK and those events are not like these events, like we said, that part of that's the, um, the scholarship funds and that kind of thing. So I'm talking about, for, an apple and an apple is the Bastrop Area Cruisers and the Veterans Car Show. And to Mayor Protem Rogers' point, the city council doesn't fund the car show, but they go to Visit Bastrop with their data, and they get fun, they get hot funds from Visit Bastrop. Because they, they turn in their information, and they're an event like any other event.
The whole reason we gave that money to Visit Bastrop, because for exactly what Becky said, they're the professionals on know what kind of events will get the most bang for it. So that's the reason we give them that pocket of money to distribute, because they're, they're the qualifying person to do it. So that's why, you know, I don't, I just want to make sure that you guys are understanding that we're not, that me personally am not trying to get rid of the patriotic festival, I want to maneuver it away where she has an opportunity to get more funds than just this for porta-potties. I just want to make sure that's clear.
And, and part of my understanding, going back to, uh, 2018, is that it wasn't necessarily viewed, though, as a tourism event. And so that's why they, they shifted away our funding from getting hot funds to getting money from, what's the general fund?
Well, it changed from a two-day event to a one-day event, so it's hard to qua, to say that people are coming for, to spend the night, and for you to prove heads and beds. The other community events that we talked about, and the reason they're in community events... events and not under hot funds, was the conversation that Councilmember Lee brought up, the homecoming parade, had a really hard time qualifying for hot funds, because people were coming back to town and staying with friends, not filling up the hotels. And so, and there was a discussion of that's a long tradition. There was a discussion that they charge a ticket price to get into the rodeo, but we make a contribution to that four-day event. So that's, I understand that it gets kind of confusing, because there's different kinds of events. I'm just trying to be consistent.
Sorry, Becky, I have one more question. On your little chart here, your asterisk, when you gave up the hot funds in 2015, but Visit Bastrop wasn't formed till 2007?
So I noticed that there was one thing, that 2016, we did part of that year function as a visitor center, because again, when we decided to stop operating as a visitor center...
Right, I remember. I was your chair at that time.
I know, I just...
So I was just letting you know that we didn't have Visit Bastrop, so that wasn't why we gave the hot funds back. We wanted to stand on our own two feet.
Right. But June of 2016 is when the contract was ending with the Hyatt. So we functioned as a visitor center the first quarter of 2016. And then we started with a consultant and getting Visit Bastrop started. So Visit Bastrop officially started October 1st of 2017. But those conversations went farther back.
You're not getting my point. My point being is that Chamber wanted to stand on their own feet in 2016. That was a decision, because you should be proud of that. I was trying to give you a pat on the back, not give you an excuse.
I'm sorry, I thought you were questioning the...
No, I just wanted you to remember that that was why you wanted to stand on your own two feet, because you didn't need those. So I was just giving you a pat on the back.
Thank you.
You dodged it, but it's okay.
I'm sorry, you said the asterisks, and so I thought you were asking about the asterisks, and I know that...
Oh, no, I just remembered. That's why you had those days, because of that.
Yeah, gotcha. Councilmember Kirkland?
Oh.
Can I bring up one more point?
Please.
The Homecoming Committee, and again, this is nothing against the Chamber, the Homecoming Committee, MLK, Juneteenth, all of those are done by volunteer groups. None of them are put on by, even though you're a nonprofit, you are still a business. And so, and so they get paid staff to do that. So got to remember, you still have a playing field. And so if you're thinking about it as a citizen, you're giving away that money to a business. Citizens don't always see all of this that we see. But on that, if you're looking at the city from the outside, you're giving, you're donating to a business where you're only donating to the nonprofits that are doing, all that work is done by volunteers. They don't have any paid staff. So I just think the event's gotten huge and too much to handle for the Chamber. You've done too good of a job, created a monster.
Councilmember Lee?
And to add to that, I know, I don't know, I've never really been part of the MLK, but for Juneteenth, I do know that that money has, the money that they have received, it was always specified to help with the cost of the convention center, specifically for that reason. It wasn't used for anything else, other than put in a reserve account specifically for whatever the cost was. So in a way, that, to me, again, that's why, going back to, if we specify exactly what the money is going for, it makes sense, because they're right. No one got paid to do what they were doing for Juneteenth.
Okay, council, so we need to give direction to staff. And one of the things is, we can't all help but notice that it was thirty thousand last year, the request was for thirty-three, six, and what's currently in the budget, as I understand it, is thirty-five. So we ought to have a discussion about what is the amount, and then, and we're not voting on anything tonight, so there's still time to have a conversation. But I, because of council's previous understanding, and, well, there's just no point in repeating all of it again. If we have clarity that it's for fireworks, I would like it to be in the budget as fireworks, so that we don't have future councils confused about what the money is going for.
And are you wanting suggestions on what amount we should settle on? So when looking at the last page here, or this last email, I guess, it says that Sky Wonder said it was fourteen point five minutes, which typically equates to twenty-nine thousand dollars in value. I guess they only charge us fifteen thousand. So I think that that might be a good number to start with. But then, we kind of talked about making them longer, so maybe start with this twenty-nine thousand dollar value and go from there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And I think somebody, because there's been a lot of firework conversations today. Smithville had phenomenal fireworks. I've heard a lot of people say phenomenal fireworks. It may be worth checking with them to see what the budget, does anybody know? You may not, but we can, we certainly, that's easy to do. So if, it doesn't matter, because what's in the budget is thirty-five. Do you guys want to leave it at thirty-five? Do you want to reduce it to thirty? You want to, we can leave it at thirty-five and let staff do some research and come back, and we can make the final decision on how it's designated, and we can have some additional information to find out how long we can have fireworks, depending on the amount, because it also depends on the contractor that we use.
I think thirty-five is great, because that could be our max, and then we could work down, depending again on how long we want them to last.
And if we leave thirty-five in there, Councilmember Kirkland, then that gives us the opportunity to have one more workshop discussion and decide how it's designated, whether it's solely for fireworks, or whether it's additional, and we can have a conversation about what is allowable additional with tax dollars. Is that okay? All right. Does that make sense to you, Trey? All right. Okay.
April, the Smithville Chamber told me they spent twenty-five, if that gives you some information.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
But that's just verbal.
Appreciate, thank you very much. So twenty-five?
Ten thousand more.
Yeah, so that's ten thousand more, and maybe that's why people were talking about the Smithville fireworks. Okay. Council, that's everything that was on last night's agenda. I had one more thing, but I always hate to go first. Does anybody else have other budget topics, any budget questions? Councilmember Plunkett.
I just wanted to, and I don't know if this is the best time to talk about it, but I wanted to at least begin a conversation about, I know Tracy does a great job of conservatively estimating our revenues, and I just want to, you know, based on conservative growth estimates, I think, you know, one of the things that I do in my business is consider the, you know, so we're, and in doing that, you know, we're looking at, you know, five percent growth, for example, in sales tax. Well, you know, one of the things that I have to do is, okay, you know, that's what we're going to count on, that's what we're going to budget for, but what do we need to prepare for in case it blows up, in case it's twenty-five, in case, you know, in case it goes, you know, really big?
Extra revenue?
Well, extra, which, that's going to bring extra population, extra problems, extra expenses that go along with it. What do we need to do to prepare for the big potential? And, you know, maybe it's a four-lane street instead of a two-lane street. On any given project, what do we need, you know, I just want to start that conversation, and maybe Trey can speak to that, or...
Sure. So we had a slight conversation about some of this this afternoon, and Councilmember Plunkett makes a very good point. And it's kind of the direction, I believe, that we've been headed. When we make decisions about a street, for example, we want to make sure if it's being put in at that current moment, that it's built for full build-out. So with the current inflation or material costs continually changing, I believe what he was proposing is, let's make sure that we're making the right decisions on what we may be building. Are we spending the right amount of money on the expense side? Because we know that we're growing faster and faster each year, and I think the goal here is not to get caught off guard, which is some really good planning, and I think it's a good conversation to start having. And then even annually, really drill down on those numbers if we need to, to make sure that we're double-checking the math, if you will, right? So we've had a growth rate, and Jennifer can probably spot it right off the top of her head, but even since the census, we know the number's slightly larger, right? There's about eleven thousand sixty people here, where we were under ten thousand just in 2020, when things were counted by the federal government. So with, it's okay for us to project, I believe, what's going to happen with current growth. And again, I think that's just a conversation we should continue to have. Happy to do that when we want.
Well, that's the, that's the super sauce in municipal government, right? Because what you don't want to do is be caught with, you've planned on it, it didn't come, and now you have bonds you can't support with sales tax, or with property tax. So it's an excellent question. The specific of, should it be two lanes or four lanes, or that kind of thing, that's, that's part of why we have a transportation master plan, because regardless of how fast you're growing, there's only so much density that you can get within a certain area. And that's why we designate the different levels of street classifications and get right-of-way in the plating process, even though we may only build two lanes now, because that's all we can afford to build. We have the ability to go to four lanes and not have to do eminent domain to get the right-of-way. So it's a great question, it's hard. City Manager Job and I got to see the, oh my goodness, Councilmember Kirkland, you would have loved it. It was the coolest tool from Garver Engineering, and Ms. Waldron, I think, is going to have an opportunity to see it as well. And it's, it sounds really simple, but there's a lot of complications that go in it, and it was looking at capital projects and knowing that, and now I can't look at Tracy. Accountants will say, it's twelve million dollars, it's a twelve-year, it's a million dollars a year. That's not really how you spend the money. So it's got some default profiles of how the money is spent, and it also has, part that Tracy would really, really like, is put in an inflation rate. Is the inflation rate this percent or this percent? Is it this percent for the first year? And then you can move those, if you got a grant, you can pull this project forward. So it really is a real-time, actual cash flow for all of your CIP projects. And Garver was showing us the tool, Mr. Job and I spoke about, one of the ways that it can be funded is out of some of the CIP project grants, and would really give you absolute visibility to that, to where when you're making the decision, you could be looking at, well, what if, what if the inflation rate really goes up? What project can we now not afford to do? And what are the increments of that project? And it had all kinds of stuff that you could do, as far as, well, how much are you spending on streets, and how does that compare to wastewater, and what areas of town for, because some city councils have districts, and so you get into a conversation of, well, if it's a thirty million dollars, how much am I getting in my district? So that's a super good question. Ms. Waldron has done well as a CFO, because it's always good to be conservative on the revenue and be pleasantly surprised. That gives us one-time funding, and the cost estimates for the expenses are looked at on a regular basis.
Right. And I do want to mention, that tool was actually very interesting. I do believe we could spread it across multiple projects, and have that, whatever the cost is covered. But it'd have to be a great tool for when we decide for a future bond. So if there is a future bond election, I think that would be a really helpful tool for the folks that are making decisions in the room, have lots of community input to understand, and everybody would be involved. And I think the conversation's something, to answer your question, we have all the time. But that's a great opportunity to do it real time, just like you talked about. Change inflation rates, change interest rates, understand when revenue's going to peak and when it's going to fall, and then try to keep everything nice and smooth. And that'll be the conversation between the, obviously with the city council, but also with that bond election.
That's also why we go over the impact fees on a regular basis as well, and assess those. Did that come anywhere? That's a super hard question. Did that come anywhere?
No, it's fair.
All right. And Mayor Protem Rogers?
I was going to say my next question whenever you were done.
You're up.
I did have a question on the audiovisual improvement council chambers information technology. On the budget book, it's page twenty-nine. It's for thirty thousand dollars.
Got the budget book?
Twenty-nine. Yeah, so that particular item is actually going to be paid for by beg fees. And what that'll allow to happen is to have some shared screens between Councilmember seats, so that, because sometimes it's hard to see, when people provide presentations or things of that nature, it's an upgrade to the system and the equipment in here. What we need is more outlets and more plugins, basically to make those additional feeds happen. And then you would have a screen right in front of you that you were allowed to see a little closer, for example. Sometimes these are, these are hard to see, especially when there's presentations from other groups that aren't City Master.
Well, the other, before the screen idea came up, we've discussed before about different mics. So I know the mayor has trouble seeing whose lights on and whose not lights on, and we had talked about once before about a mic thing. I didn't know if that was part of it, because I think that was a problem way before screens were a problem. So we've, I was concerned about us jumping over a problem we've had, and went on to a new one, and we didn't fix the problem we had.
Thank you. I feel like a bobblehead sometimes.
I did find out, when I was, when I get to sit in that chair, that you can actually shut me up.
Yeah, I do, I can kill all the mics, but y'all don't...
Paul showed me that button.
I know, y'all don't, nor, I've never used that button. I just want to go on record.
Paul didn't think you knew it, you had it.
I don't know, I mean...
But I was just concerned about that, because that was one of the problems we had had about the microphones, is the person running the meeting, the mayor, couldn't tell who needed it. You know, she gets confused a lot, not her particularly, but not seeing, you know, whose mic's on and who came first, but it was a little bit more...
It was really bad during COVID when the plastic was up, because the reflection, I couldn't tell depth perception-wise who it was. And I think sometimes those screens, I can tell who came on first, so I'm not trying to, you know, it'll just tell me who's come on first.
So I didn't know if we could look at something?
It's a whole lot more money, isn't it?
Well, that's not in this particular bid, but we're happy to reach out to our experts there and say...
Well, I'm just saying, we had that problem before we had this problem, so...
We can certainly address it.
And Councilmember Kirkland, I think you were the one that had, maybe was in, made the request?
Yeah, I made the request for the screens.
Which are fine, I wasn't that one.
Yeah, no, no, I have a pretty serious issue with it, and he just was looking for a solution, and, you know, even if it was just, is there anything you can do for me personally? Because oftentimes, this is the only one that I can actually read, but then I have to, like, lay back in a seat to get to it.
Oh, I wasn't disagreeing with your screen. I was wanting them to combine the two efforts, is what I was trying to...
Oh, no, that's fair, but I just, I wanted to give you some, I mean, I went to Paul and to Trey, and I said, hey, guys, I'm kind of having a problem.
I just wanted to put it together instead of just the screen, that's all. I wasn't dishing yours for this one.
Got it.
Can you guys, between now and, can we maybe make...
Already on it.
Well, there you go. Love it, love it. All right. Any other questions? Y'all are pretty quiet. Councilmember Lee?
I have a question. So can I, because I have some questions, like, on some of these other fees.
Ask them, absolutely. What is extremely helpful, if you'll say what page you're on?
So I'm looking at these here, and I'm on page eight.
The master fee schedule that was a handout, that was an attachment to City Manager Job?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's look at page three first. On dog training, does someone from the city provide that dog training?
No, that's a fee that, if someone wants to train at the dog park, for example, that's the fee that they would pay to hold a class.
So if I wanted to hold a class on dog training, I'd have to pay, I couldn't just say, y'all come down to the park and I'll train your dog?
You can't say, come down to the dog park I don't own and don't maintain, and give me money. That's what that's for.
Okay. So I got that answered. Page, page eight. At the bottom, residential addition. So I did not know if I wanted to remodel my kitchen, I had to pay a fee for that. So is that for anything? Like, if I just want to lay down some baseboards?
If you buy a new microwave, we want some, no. Let's let Ms. Bills answer that.
No, there, so we actually, on our website, we do have for different trade permits or different construction permits, what needs a permit, actually, and what needs an inspection. So just switching out your cabinets, no. But if you're going to replumb in your sink and your dishwasher, and move everything around, and take down a wall, then that needs a remodel.
Okay. I'm like, I just...
So I just want to make sure I was clear. If I remember back in our building Bastrop days, it was if we touched electricity, if we touched the water, or we moved a structure like a wall, we had to tell you. I can do everything else to it.
Or a certain, certain amount of your drywall, if you take that all down, then that needs a permit. a permit.
Okay, that's to make sure my, my brain was wrapping around what you were saying. Thank you.
That's a good way to remember. Water, electricity, want.
Yeah, but changing your flooring, no, you don't need a permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, because I put down some baseboards.
The hard part, so that we're all clear, particularly with historic homes, because my kids own a historic home, is what you started to do is very often not what you end up doing.
True.
And so it, it's not if you intended to touch electricity if you, when you started, it's as soon as you need to touch electricity, then you need to come get a, a permit. And it's to make sure that you don't, you know, like burn your house down. Or you have a gas leak, or you move a structural wall and you don't put it back and now your ceiling's caving in. So I think it's much more straightforward on newer homes. I think with historic homes, it gets, and historic buildings for that matter, but we were talking about residential, it can get a little, you know, it starts as a little project and it turns into a big project.
So having said that, so if I needed to replace my, whatever the box is on the outside of the house with the breaker thing, so.
Breaker box?
The breaker box. So if I hired an electrician to replace that, that's not good enough. I would, I would need to come to the city and get.
The electrician will very likely give you a quote that says, $200 for me, $100 for the breaker box, and it's, and $85 for my permit.
They know that that should be included in their.
Yes, they, they're, if they're a licensed electrician, they know they have to get a permit.
Not Joe from down the street.
Correct.
He might not know, but a license.
He may not want him.
Okay. All right.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rogers wants you to know you may not want him.
I may not want Joe from down the street, right. The vehicle towing, I think I've, oh, no, I had a question on the vehicle towing. So if I get into an accident.
What page you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page 13.
Okay.
So I wanted to know who determines ownership of these fees? So in reading it, I'm assuming if I'm in, if there's an accident or something.
Here comes Chief Nagy.
There you go.
That's why he's here.
Yay.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat the question.
Thank you. So my question is, I'm assuming this is if there's an accident and vehicles need to be towed away or, and that's what these fees are. Is that correct?
Yes, these fees are for what's called non-consent tow. So that's where the owner of the vehicle has their vehicle towed on behalf of the police department. So if we make an arrest, that is a non-consent tow. Or if you are in an accident and you don't care who tows your vehicle, we will get a tow truck company for you, and that is this fee as well.
Okay. So doesn't matter who caused the accident, it's your vehicle, this is the fee.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
But if you want to have your own person, your own tow truck company come and get your particular vehicle, then you just have to pay likely a much higher fee.
Okay.
And the other thing that you can do, if, if I hit you, and I would not hit your car, if I hit you and your car couldn't go and you said, yes, please tow, you're going to save that receipt and you're going to turn it into your insurance.
Just a quick, this is not like a, a fine that you pay on top of the tow fee. This is the tow fee.
This is the tow fee that the tow truck companies are authorized.
Got it.
So we don't, the city doesn't receive any money. This is their fees for towing a particular vehicle.
Do you have a specific company that you use? You rotate through all of them? Is this an average price or is it somebody we partner with?
No, this is actually a set price. And then our dispatch center has a list of tow truck companies. And they just go down the list, and when it's at the bottom, it comes back up. So everybody gets their fair share of vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, I'm good on that one.
Another one of those things that you had no idea that we take care of. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Okay, page 18.
All right, 18.
And 19.
And 19.
So festival fair operational permit, 49 to 499, expected attendees, 150, 500 or more, 300. So I think I'm clear on that. But it seems like to me on then page 19 says public assembly permit, $150, but there's no head count there. So, and then if we go down to about midway in the page where it says temporary change of use permit, permit issued for hosting public, public events of greater than 50, I feel like those are all the same thing. I don't, I don't know, I don't understand the difference. So an event, a festival fair, I get. That's, that's kind of different. I might have food trucks, whatever, I get it. But the public assembly permit, what, what do you consider, what's considered a public assembly is that us just going down to the courthouse?
Is this driven back to an ordinance and that's where they're coming from?
These, these were established several years ago by the fire marshal. So they, they, these were adopted, and so I don't know.
And I would think the CUPs are weird to still have those in here anyway.
What now?
The CUP.
The, oh, well, it's a spec, it's a temporary, can, uh, let's try for less the name of, temporary occupancy or temporary change of use. So that would be if you're, you're normally a restaurant and you're changing it out for the night to be something that's not a restaurant, you know?
Okay.
That, that's what that means that you, because for fire purposes, they have to inspect to make sure possibly that there's additional exits or additional safety measures.
These are all fire.
Yeah, these are all fire fees. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
These all fall under the fire section. And he brought an ordinance a couple of years ago establishing all of these fees.
Can we, would you?
Find that out.
You're already taking care of that.
Send you an email.
Yeah, why don't we send council the ordinance and let Chief Rosales write a little summary on that?
It is my understanding generally.
I feel like some of them are the same. The word, like this permit issued for hosting public events greater than 50, to me is the same thing of the 49 on page 18.
That's because you're not a fireman. So it may be whether there's combustible events, whether it's just people, they have, they have their rules that make them.
And these all tie back to specific sections in the international fire code.
Okay, makes sense.
And I would think.
But we'll get some additional explanation to you.
And a lot of times, or at least in my mind, a public assembly is generally a gathering, protest, can be peaceful, anything happens at the courthouse. And a lot of times, the chief just makes sure fire access and things of that nature. And they, 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 they answer on as far as a gathering.
So.
That could even do an emergency.
I think the public should be clear on gatherings. So when Uvalde happened, there was talk of a gathering at the courthouse. And people were just saying, we should just go down and gather at the courthouse. No permit was mentioned, no, no idea how many people were going to go. I don't even know how, what, what ended up happening with it. I think they pushed it out and then it never happened. But so in these kind of gatherings where people just decide, hey, let's go down there, how are those typically handled? If they stay orderly, or do they need to come back and pay a fee?
Here comes Chief Nagy.
But I will say, the public assembly permit is, underneath it, a list, annual permit requirement for nightclubs. So it's a, it's for specific to nightclubs, which I don't believe we have any of.
Oh, got you. I see that.
There you go.
Yes.
So, so, and the way these are structured, a lot of them are headings and then like the specific informations underneath them.
Okay.
Okay, but Chief Nagy's going to answer the, me and my 300 closest friends have decided to meet somewhere.
Yes.
So in general, a gathering that would require some sort of permit is something that's going to interrupt public use in generally. So if we're going, if it's going to block roadways, if they're going to cross someplace different than a sidewalk that, that's marked, or if they're going to maybe impede handicap ramps or something like that. And of course, if they want to do a march down a roadway or across even sort of roadway, could, it could influence that.
Okay.
But if 20 people decide they want to hold hands in the courthouse lawn?
Yes, that's fine, yes. Generally, yeah, generally nobody. Of course, there's other things such as amplified sound, and so they can all kind of start to gear towards that.
So safety, nuisance, now, now we're interested.
Correct.
Safety, nuisance.
Does that, is that a pretty fair, a fair summary? Safety?
Yeah.
Yes, safety, nuisance, and, and we can decide to meet on your yard, but it's not really a good idea for you to decide to meet on Councilmember Plunkett's yard if he already had a party going on there, right? So.
He could invite.
Yeah, he would invite you.
Okay, thank you. Couple more, sorry. Um, let me see, I forgot, well, I'm flipping. Okay, page 20. Dockless vehicles. So we don't have any dockless vehicles. We just have the amount in there in case we get them in, in the future, like scooters, skateboards are not considered. Are they considered dockless?
Chief Nagy!
Yes. Yeah, so dockless vehicles, what we were trying to do was allow, to permit dockless vehicles where they were going to be used safe around the city. And then there was, we didn't want to just have them scattered all over the place. So we did put a lower number, I can't remember, I think it was maybe 45 to 75 that could be around the city. And there are fees for that, to have those in our city.
And, and Councilmember Lee, you'll see that that ordinance was approved on June 22nd of 2021. So it's a pretty new ordinance. And it's kind of like what we're talking about, coming up with a new process before you have the applications for the community support stuff. We knew they were coming and we didn't want to have three companies with three different ideas and we're suddenly trying to figure out what the rules are. So that was a proactive way to know how we were going to handle them.
Yeah, makes sense. Jimmy?
Councilmember Crouch?
That conversation was exactly what you said a year ago, approximately. And it was about scooters and bikes.
Bikes.
Electric that you can pull into a station and not, where we could put them and, and make sure they're not thrown in the river and you had to have a GPS for it. So there was a lot of information that went into that specific meeting. And then that's, that's where this came from too.
Okay. So my last question on page 27. I was just wondering why the variance, sign variance review fee and, was so high and the ZBA, just the variance review fees are so high. I kind of glanced around at some other cities and they're like 300 to 700. And if I'm, I want to make sure, so I want to make sure I'm understanding what this means. If they want to, if a business wants to go outside of our code for their sign, they would have to pay the fee to, to do so, right? So what determines, what is the determinant that makes this, the fee this high?
It's kind of two-part. One is cost of service because for variances, it's, goes before the zoning board of adjustment, which is a quasi judicial board, which also requires then our city attorney to usually be present. So that's an additional cost of this type of, there's a lot more legal review that goes into them usually. There's also notifications that have to go out, paper notifications, mail notifications. And then it's also partially a deterrent that if you're wanting to do something different from the code, that you, you really examine and you don't just make a lot of requests. A lot of times in cities where this fees are low, people will make repeated requests that get denied, but there, there's no incentive for them to not ask, so.
That one we had discussed before, there, some cities, once you're denied, you can't ask again for a certain period of time to keep them from just driving up, you know, I'm just going to make you pay the city attorney until you just give in and give me what I want.
Yeah, and, and some of it is also repeated in some cities I've seen. It'll be different people making the same requests and staff's recommendation is still no, and ZBA will still say no, but the, you'll have the same question come up on different properties. And so it's, it's also kind of a deterrent, repeated requests for similar variances on different properties.
I do, I, I don't know what the answer is to this, but I do know that I've spoken with multiple businesses that can't afford it. So I don't know where the happy medium is there, maybe have, you know, talk to the city about what those obstacles are. But I, for the administrative one, I, I know I've talked to a lot of businesses that just say they, 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 they want a sign in a different location or, but they can't afford the $1,000 to do the variance. So they put it up and then wait for the city to tell them to take it down because they need to advertise their business. So I know when we, when we start talking about these things a little bit more, I would like that to be part of the discussion to find out how we can help these small businesses with this.
I think part of, I think a really easy way to fix that is one, if there are several variance requests, that's something we can certainly look at in that staff recommended amendment to the code. And we'll go through that list and see what the majority of the required variances are. And if we have a list, I think we could certainly take that from council and bring it back, vet that through P and Z. And the decision may be to change the ordinance versus, it would be a lot easier to change the ordinance one time instead of the lower the fee tonight and go over it 75 times.
Yeah, the variance takes staff time. So if, if the answer's always going to be yes, then just change the code. Don't have a variance, they don't have to pay a fee and solution.
Correct.
Excellent.
But this allows you to have a deterrent, if it's something that you really want to keep.
From a nuisance request.
And I understand that too, yeah. That's perfect, thank you. I'm done.
I am so glad that you did a detailed review of the fees. Great questions. Counsel, any more questions? I, I have one other thing on my list of stuff I wanted to talk about tonight. And we now know that for the first time, we have a facilities and grounds and maybe perhaps facilities, grounds and park organization. And speaking of growth, that Councilmember Plunkett was talking about, we've added, this council has told the staff to move forward with a budget that's adding several FTEs, more than we've ever added in the last years that I've been involved in it. We also know that at the, Councilmember Plunkett and I are on the BEDC board, and they had a strategic plan that was recommending that the office relocate to a more visible area. And I know there's been some conversations with Visit Bastrop about, there's just a lot of moving parts in all of this. So I would like us to say to City Manager Job that as a part of that facilities department, we should be looking at maximum utilization of all our facilities. And some of that can include, there's been some discussions of even some new facilities and, and who, who, who does it make sense to have together? Where does it make sense to have them? You know, lot, lots of things. So one of the things that we owe our taxpayers is that we are leveraging and utilizing every one of their tax dollars as best as we possibly can. And so that may be in some, two organizations that are sharing a receptionist, that may be in using a building like, I think the recreation center in a building that acted as storage for two or three years and we put a few thousand dollars in it and now it's a rec center. That's a, that's a way of utilizing city assets. So I need to know if anybody's opposed to asking the city manager to do, really do a deep dive on facility utilization and include particularly selfishly, I think we should focus on organizations that we completely fund, like BEDC and Visit Bastrop. You know, our, our organizations that are funded with tax dollars, tax dollars that we approve their budget. It's, it's unfair to say to someone, I think your budget's too high, but we're not providing you any options. So I'm trying to be, we know there's some problems out there and let's be part of the solution. They can't decide anything without coming back to us and there'll be some conversations about it. But Councilmember Plunkett, from your growth comment, like there's, there's some things that we know are happening. There's, we don't have enough offices for all of the FTEs that we're bringing on, so we double up or we start moving some folks around. Mayor Protem Rogers?
I think that is a fabulous point, because for EDC's point, we're paying someone else rent, we should be paying ourselves rent.
Or not charging them rent.
Or, I mean, but it's our building, so we're not, you know, we'll just be paying ourselves back instead of paying another commercial thing. So I think that would be a smart thing for us, especially because of the offices and stuff. They'd probably be less budget on their end.
Well, and the consultant, and correct me if you understood it differently, Councilmember Plunkett, but the consultant's point was, the BEDC offices, you shouldn't have to need a magnifying glass to find them. They're not super obvious, and so the recommendation in the strategic report was to have it in a more visible place. Well, if I was the consultant, that's exactly what I would have recommended and why. Our perspective is leveraging tax dollars and utilizing our facilities, and I'm thinking there's a huge overlap in that if we explore some other options. Councilmember Crouch?
Are there a lot of, we have a huge inventory of buildings? I mean, it should be a pretty quick search, right?
There are opportunities, and I would, we have an executive session on Tuesday night, so I would like to finish answering that question in executive session.
So there is not a large surplus of buildings, but there are opportunities. So we know that we're bringing on 12 people, the offices are short here. The original suggestion from the consultant for BEDC was to move them to City Hall. A better option for us would be to move to a predominant location, which is what was ultimately suggested. We've already had previous conversations with Visit Bastrop, and we said, hey, if they take our building back, can you guys find a place to stay? And so we think there might be opportunity to leverage those two people together. So maybe they find one predominant location, wherever it is, and they share common space, lobby, a receptionist, something like that, and there's really an opportunity to leverage.
So just so.
That's the kind of search we would do.
If you're on the Visit Bastrop staff or board, he did not just kick them out of the, that's not what we're saying.
That's correct, that's not what we're saying.
But what we are saying is, it's, to say, well, go find another place to rent, and now their rent's three times as much, now they need more hot funds, and that's back to Mayor Protem Rogers' point. Like that doesn't benefit anybody. So if there's a solution that ultimately costs fewer tax dollars, it doesn't matter if they're, it doesn't matter if it sells tax dollars, property tax dollars, hot funds, it's tax dollars that the government has that we should be using wisely. Councilmember Crouch?
Just out of curiosity, how long has the BEDC been in that spot? Long time?
They were on Main Street, and then they moved off of Main Street and moved there. And that's kind of a different conversation, because there were some pros and cons of them being on Main Street. Sometimes there were, folks wanted, there is a theory that says, some people are doing deals and they don't want the whole world to know that they're doing a deal and working with BEDC. There's other theories that say, well, that's why you have a conference room, and, you know, so. And the other part of this is those organizations don't pay property tax. So it's prominent, but not the highest and best, you know, there's just a lot of things to balance.
Yeah, I was just curious how long they.
I, I think it's been at least eight years, seven, eight years. Councilmember Kirkland, are you about to?
I'm kinda waiting for this part of the discussion. I have a different facilities and budget cross-sectional topic.
Yeah, that's, unless somebody doesn't want them working on it, I think that's a good idea. Okay, Councilmember Kirkland?
Air conditioning replacements. It's the sort of thing, when they hit, they're expensive, and, you know, they may have an estimated life to them, and one can look at how many we have and how far they are, how far past their expected lives they are, and so on. And there could be six in this budget that I just didn't see, but how are we handling that?
So there's a current, there's a current inventory that we have for all of the ACs, for every facility that we have. They are on a replacement schedule. What happens is that funding may roll over into a fund, because it's still working great, and we've had it inspected, and we'll wait, but the dollars are sitting there, and we're ready to replace. We do the same thing for the roof, for example, because that is also a pretty large scale cost whenever it comes up. So we do an inspection annually for that, the same thing with the ACs, and we have a service contract that keeps them up. To make sure they're maintained.
So those things are being done, but that's also part of what will be done in buildings and grounds, is the facilities.
That's part of our building maintenance, yeah, that we do now.